United States of America and due republic for which it stands, one nation here on the end of this book of the pre-teen disaster.
Call this January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, or the Board of Education meeting to order. Will call please.
Bosso.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Martindale. Mr. Schreiner.
Here.
Mr. Caldwell.
Here.
You got a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Schreiner. You got a second?
I'm second.
Will call please.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Minutes from the last meeting are in the, uh, in board docs. We get a motion to approve those minutes.
Don't move.
You got a second?
Second.
Ms. Bearden, will call please.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Thanks. Uh, all right, tonight we have, uh, two special presentations, um, and we'd like to bring our participation update from Mr. Tim Cox.
Good evening, President Caldwell, Vice President Schreiner, Dr. Wise, Mr. Garci, Board, everybody here. Uh, my name's Tim, I'm the supervisor of transportation, I have an assistant here back there with John Euclid, one of our four assistants. Um, pleased to be here and give you our yearly report. So we're going to talk about fleet first of all. Um, just like everything else in our country, we're having trouble getting parts. Our cost of fleet have gone up about eight percent, uh, through the year, but currently we have eighty-four passenger transits, um, sixty-eight of them. Those, those, hello, those. Hi, Meredith. Those are the ones that do not have a put-on. There are eighty-four, about twenty-eight seats, you can get fifty-six kids to receive them. Then we have the seventy-eight passengers, we have thirty-four of those, those are Bluebird, uh, buses. Uh, they have twenty-six seats in them, so you can get about fifty-six kids. The next are Seventy-Something Passenger International, those are, we have about fifty-five, and then we have four sixty-five passengers, we use for special ed. Twenty-five mini buses, I'm sorry, twenty-five passenger mini buses, we have eight of them. Uh, those are the little ones that we mainly use for preschool. And then we have forty accessible, uh, handicap buses, those are the ones with wheelchair lifts in them. And we have four, uh, vans that we have started using quite a bit to transport some individual students, uh, that really can't ride on the school bus. So we're using this board. As you know, we entered into a new routing system this year. Uh, very thrilled to have TransFinder, their suite. We have Route Finder, Route Finder, our routing supervisors have used this. It is user-friendly, they have boundaries, they can click, they can make boundaries, they can make their own map if they want to pretend, uh, to see what it looks like for counts. They know where all the kids are, uh, they know where all the bus stops are, they can move bus stops around if they need to, they can match times. And I'm going to talk a little bit about how that matches into a tablet that we have on buses now with our Route Finder. Next is Stop Finder. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, we'll go to Wayfinder. Wayfinder are tablets that are in the school bus, that goes from the routes to the tablets. So whatever the routers routing, the bus drivers can use that tablet to run the route. So for example, if you're driving a special ed route, and when the student is not going, you can X out that student on your tablet and it will route you to the next stop. So it's got a lot of great details. John Euclid is back here, is our junior on IT, uh, Brian has helped us set this up. It's been a real team effort, and I think the drivers are really starting to like the tablets. If for some reason I call out the radio and say, "I need someone to cover Seventeen," they can pull Seventeen's route up there and it will show them what the route is. They get them from wherever they're at to that route. That make sense? Okay, and then now we have Stop Finder. So one of the complaints that we get in our industry is communicating with parents. This Stop Finder is something that parents can get on an Apple, Android phone, and they can have it on their watch. It is, um, real-time, and they can put out their own little area, we call Geo-Finting, around their bus stop, around their caregiver, around wherever they want it. They can share it with their families, uh, they have to have a password to get into it, so it's very, very safe. Uh, we have about twenty-four hundred parents that are using Stop Finder now. What I'm most excited about is, we don't have a way to contact, uh, our charters and our parochial schools. With Stop Finder, we can. We can send out announcements with the same buses are going to be late, um, so communication will get better with the charters and parochials. So routing information, we have about one hundred and eighty-three bus routes. We have one thousand sixty-one total runs, a run makes up a route. So generally, you'll have six runs per day per route, meaning a high school, elementary, middle school. We have six hundred and thirty public runs per day, we have two hundred and thirty-three special education runs per day, fifty-one preschool, ninety-seven non-public, which is charter and parochial, and a hundred and seventy-two mid-game runs. Transporting by the numbers, uh, this is really twenty-one, twenty-two stats. Total fuel miles, last year was two million seven hundred sixty-seven. Students transported, this is this year, fifteen thousand three hundred fifty-seven. District square miles, a hundred and nineteen, and in total miles driven last year was two million eight hundred plus. We have a hundred and eighty drivers, we are still recruiting drivers with the help of communication, with Facebook, with YouTube. Uh, we're, we're starting to get drivers come in, we have seven currently in training, uh, to help us fill the needs of our staff. We have forty-nine aides that ride with special needs, we have seven mechanics, uh, we have four office reports, four routing supervisors, about eleven subs, sixteen sub aides, and two sub mechanics. Uh, as you guys know, we have a family Christmas, uh, fund that we do each year. Uh, they did a great job this year, they raised nearly thirty-two hundred dollars for twenty-nine, twenty-nine students that they adopted. And it brought everybody into our place, it was real fun and really shed the spirit of the holidays. And, uh, that's all I have for you. Any questions?
I just wondered, uh, this is my opportunity to share every year about how proud we are of our transportation department. I have ridden those routes, I try to do that every year or two, and it, it just amazes me that, uh, in, in the dark of the morning, these drivers are, are picking kids up and trying to avoid cars that are parked, uh, on streets and, and they're just, they're amazing to me, uh, what, what they do. I guess my question is, um, sub-wise, eleven, we have eleven subs, how, are, are we, we're doing okay then?
No, we're not, that, we need about twenty per day. Uh, the eleven subs, those include folks that have full-time jobs that come in and do field trips for us, who, who don't do regular routes. So out of those eleven, we probably have four or five that would come in Monday to Friday. That's why we're doing the entraining and stuff another behind them, and we'll continue to hire, continue to train. Yeah, it's not stopping. I will say that, and my, my belief is that the economy, or at least getting clientele to come in, is a little bit easier than it was in October. So it seems like it's getting a little bit better.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate all your support, Lee.
But, Tim, and, and, go on that question, we've got a hundred and eighty-three regular routes, ideally you'd have a hundred and eighty-five drivers and about twenty-five prepared subs.
Correct.
That's where we'd like to be. So we, we are a significant away from where we'd like to be with transportation, and I think you've seen with many neighboring districts that were all struggling with those. Um, we've tried to put in several incentives in order to make that happen. Uh, you want to talk a little bit about what your folks do in order to help people get their CBL on the charts, Mr. Schreiner?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll bring them in, and we don't pay for training, but we will pay them to ride a school bus, basically become a bus aide. So that, two-fold, one, they get to learn what the routes are, see what a regular driver does, look at the students, make sure you're prepared to drive for our, our district when the time comes. So they're getting money while they're in training, which helps them pay their bills, pay for the CBL. We also have paid for most of their CBL training. For example, we pay for the CBL test, we pay for the drug test, we pay for the back physical, uh, we pay for a class at every bus driver in the state of Ohio that has to attend, uh, which is called pre-service class. So we're paying for quite a bit of their, um, their training. The only thing that they need to pay for is their temp license, which means they can go with an instructor and, and learn how to drive a bus, and then they pay for their CBL once they get it, which is an update, Class B, uh, school bus passenger endorsement. So we are trying to help them as much as possible. Plus it gives me an opportunity to get our, our supervisors to get to know them, to get to know what their feeling is, to talk to them about, uh, passing that temp test, which is pretty difficult, and then moving on and getting their CBL.
Can you take a minute to pass, uh, that, that? I have a, let's pretend that I have a flexible job and I've got a day a week where I'm willing to drive off and field trips, but I can't commit every day, and I'd be in a fifteen sub. Would you help me in that same way even though I'm not willing to be a full-time driver?
I'll take you tomorrow, yes. Yeah, well, I really, you know, we have people that work for the city of Columbus, um, and, and not the school system, but the city of Columbus, in different departments. And they work maybe a six to two, or they're able to come in, and whenever they come in, um, at three to do help with sort of field trips. Uh, we've had firemen come in because they work one day for a twenty-four hour shift, and they're off two days where they can help us win. And, and they get extra money, and a lot of people like to go watch sports, so it helps us.
And the other benefit, I think that relatively, you need to pass the state, we do not, it's not, I, 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 we do not pay a different rate for sit-tuning versus drive. And so we pay the same rate, and there are areas of the state that it's a reduced rate when you're not driving, and we don't, we don't, we figure we'll kind of up your time and you, you committed to us, and so we try to make that, um, worthwhile for the individual.
Yeah, and a lot of them go overboard and, you know, helps out their, their pocket, helps us out.
Great. And when you got, I want to take me back to your slide two on, uh, agency, I know it's not always about age, and it's mostly limited to about miles, and sometimes, with the third years, you get much better.
Well, we are hoping by this time we'd be done with the two thousand fives, but our pain point, to be honest with you, is handicap buses. Um, we hot, we ordered three buses, or we ordered fifteen buses last year. Three of the buses, a year later, we still have not received because of the back order and the parts for handicap, for the lifts. Those are supposed to arrive this week sometime. Our mechanics do a really good job with, with doing services, so if they hit miles or they hit time, they bring that bus in and change the oil, change the fluid, go through the whole bus, check the brakes, make sure everything's okay with them. We are spending a lot of time with rust, obviously, still, um, and making sure that those buses are passing. We've already started our annual inspection, uh, we have passed forty-five buses so far, or twenty-three, twenty-four, and we should have, excuse me, all those buses passed by, hopefully, June first. So all of the fleet will be the same. It is now, it used to be that you could order a bus in February and have the buses by August, September, now the wait time is twelve months. So those buses you see right there will start school in twenty-three, twenty-four. We won't take any buses out until we get the other buses in. So our mechanics need to make sure, especially the older buses, that they're prepared, that they are going to pass inspection, um, and so far we've done pretty well. Every bus we've sent through has passed, so far. So it is, it is becoming quite a challenge, uh, as the fleet gets older.
Back to Stop Finder, how many people did you say are rich now?
Twenty-four hundred.
So what are we doing to improve transportation of the other nineteen thousand students, sir? Because I know one of the things that I hear a lot are, you know, I call, I don't get an answer, or it takes a while to get an answer, obviously, when you don't get a call, you answer a lot.
Yeah.
How are we doing with, uh, key attention of our, our parents?
I think pretty well, we have it, you know, Evan has it on the webpage, we have, uh, banners placed in every school, and we have QRs out there. We're going to push for the charters and non-bus down the road, uh, to make sure they get it. Um, so I think there, it is out there, and it's word of mouth, and our, and our secretaries are talking about it when they call in too. That we have this opportunity that you can find out where the bus is. And I, I really would tell you that our phone calls have gone down, um, quite a bit about where is the bus, what time will the bus be there, et cetera. And that's our whole goal, is to keep you to get with the parents, so they know where that bus is.
Those, those slides, I'll be back, thank you. Uh, the same question I had is, you're in the radio ads, you're not a teacher, uh, well, who knows that? Uh, and you're talking about competitive pay and benefits, I know that we offer a very competitive pay and benefit package. Do our benefits start on day one, too?
No.
Okay, I, I just heard.
It does when you become full-time. So when you become full-time, it's, it's, it's thirty hours a week guaranteed, and you get your benefits, when you're a sub, you do not.
I see. Any other questions? Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, have a good day.
Next up on our agenda is our food services update from Ms. Marissa Hammer.
President Caldwell, Vice President Schreiner, members of the board, Dr. Wise and Mr. Garci, thank you so much for having me this evening to give an update on food services. Um, I'm always that person that loves meetings because I love when people get together and everybody bonds, and actually, this is the, I do enjoy this presentation because I get to speak about my department. And I know that, uh, they do great things, and I'm always excited to share that with you, so. So first and foremost, uh, Marissa Sikes joined our team in July. Um, she, uh, comes from long-term, uh, care, uh, she also has school, uh, background as well, um, and she's been fantastic. I can't say anything better, she's caught on very well, um, we're just spending time acclimating her to processes that we do in the department, and then also, um, how we do things in the district, but we're exceptionally happy to have her here, so, um, she's doing fantastic. So the first thing I want to kind of discuss on, I always do a slide on participation, um, this one I did a little bit different, so obviously, so our numbers are based on October numbers, all federal programs use that as a benchmark, um, so these are based off of where we were in October. So we are currently selling or serving sixty-five hundred breakfasts a day and twelve thousand seven hundred lunches a day as well. I did a comparison this time because I kind of wanted to look at, see where our participation was when meals were free to where we are to this day, to see if we are still maintaining that participation. And to be honest with you, I'm happy where we're at. Um, we're serving right now thirty-one percent of our student population for breakfast, where last year we served thirty-three percent, so that's a two percent, um, drop, which I hate drops, but it, it's, uh, I look at it as, it's, it, it could be much larger, so I'm, I'm happy to where it is. Our, um, lunch participation is at sixty-one percent, where last year we were at about sixty-five percent. Um, again, um, I'm not completely disappointed with that. Um, but like I said, this year the goal was to see when meals went back to full pay, what kind of change would we see in our participation, and, um, overall, I am happy with that. Oh, the last piece, um, I also wanted to touch on real quick, our district free and reduced percentage is about fifty-six percent, so we're a little over, um, half free, uh, free and reduced lunch as well. So staffing, so last year you heard me up here staffing, and I got choked up and talked about, you know, where we, we had our struggles last year, and we definitely had our struggles last year, and it wasn't, it was staffing, it was supply chain shortages. It's not that we don't have those issues this year, but it is much, much better. So two major changes that help food services is, one, the increase of our subpay. So that's helped us to maintain the subs that we currently had, and also to get other subs. And the next one was the civil set, uh, the civil service test that, um, is not required now for cooks. So once that went away, it seemed like the floodgates opened and we were ecstatic. Um, so we, as of last year, our highest point, we had thirty open positions. So at a full staff, we have a hundred and eighty-six, um, staff, and that's including head cooks and cooks. So last year we were sitting at about sixteen percent shortage of staff, and that, that was definitely hard. Um, we struggled with our sub-cooks too, because we couldn't get sub-cooks either. So this year, we're currently roughly ten positions, uh, open, and some of those are from people that retire, or, uh, we've hired some people, maybe they haven't worked out, so it seems to be, um, not, definitely not as much as it was last year. Um, so we're sitting at about a five percent shortage of our staff, uh, which I am ecstatic about. Um, once you start getting the staffing, then it just makes things work a lot easier. Um, so we're still working on building up the sub list, so if we do some interviews and we test people out, if they don't have experience in the kitchen, um, there are times that we ask them if they would prefer to be a sub, and then that way we can get our, you know, they can get their feet right and see how they work out in the kitchens, and then we, we can eventually hire them. Okay, so, um, cooler freezer replacement, so Hayes Intermediate is the last of the five that we were going to replace. So I believe we started this in eighteen, nineteen, so the plan was we had five intermediate buildings that were twenty years old, and those cooler, walk-in coolers and freezers need to be replaced. So we did a plan where we would do two, two, and one, and based on the need of the cooler and the, the freezer as far as how, how bad they were, and how, who needed to be first, and people waited a little bit. Unfortunately, last year, we went out and did the bid, and just with supply chain issues and with the cost of everything, it wasn't feasible, because it wasn't, one, going to be able to be done by the time that school started, because it's typically the tarot is done over the summer. Um, so it is now rescheduled for the summer, so we're happy with that, because, um, that will be the last piece of, of those replacements. So we did want to touch a little bit on the supply chain issues, so we're still having some issues with products, um, but I will say that we have been consistent with our menu, um, if, if we, we do have still some outages, but it wasn't anything like last year where we were juggling and had to figure out different things that we were serving for the kids as far as what was menued and what we could get. Um, we have issues with probably some breakfast items, I think there's some condiments, um, but there are still some, but it's nothing like last year, so. And we do our, and most of it seems to be manufacturing issues, um, seems to be one of the big costs. Um, another thing is Gordan Food Service, that's who we buy the majority of our products through, um, they did do some website changes, so one thing that's kind of helped with supply chain issues is that they added a real-time inventory, so when the cooks go, the head cooks go to put their orders in, if they need ten cases of chicken nuggets, it might show that they only are going to get eight, because that's all they have, um, in stock. So, um, I think that that's been helpful, a helpful tool, um, for them when they do their ordering, so that's been a nice thing to do. Uh, professional development, so, and on OCA in October, um, we decided to hold a person in charge training, which was through the health department, um, a person in charge training to kind of explain that it's a level-one certification, so every kitchen has to have a level-two, and your head cook is the one that carries the level-two. When they are not there, you have to have a backup person that can do a level-one. And so we had a lot of kitchens that didn't have level-one certifications. So we ended up holding a training on that day voluntary, um, at no cost to the cooks. Um, I looked at it as an investment in our program, and it's something that we needed to happen. So out of, um, our cooks, we had sixty-six that showed up, um, and did the test, so I was actually very happy. So everybody that showed up took a test, had the four-hour training, and everybody, they're all level-one. So I'm actually looking, because it went so well, I'd like to hold another one again, and again, it's voluntary and it's no cost to the cooks, but, um, like I said, it, it's the investment back into our kitchens, which, and food, you know, food safety is super high on the list, so, um, I feel like you can't get enough training on that, so. Um, and then the last piece I was going to touch on is, so on March seventeenth, this is professional development day, we are going to have a speaker, um, and he is known as the ex-Disney guy, I saw him, uh, previously, and he was fantastic. So his focus is going to be on, uh, customer service and making that magical experience for the students in the cafeteria, so, um, he's great, and I'm excited to bring that to our cooks. Any questions?
Well, I'll start with the ex-Disney guys, we're not going to have seven-dollar hot dogs now. Forty-four lights.
No.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah.
I've been there, I know.
Not cheap.
And I'm just going to make my, I, I, I did it for you, Tim, I have to do it for her.
Well, you don't have to, but I appreciate it.
A teacher who ate, uh, school lunches every single day.
Yeah.
Um, I'm so proud of what we do in Southwestern, because the lunches are excellent.
I appreciate that. They work very hard, and, you know, I always, like, you know, I always say this, and it's not just because I'm just saying it, but I couldn't be more proud of our staff. They all work really well together, they work very hard when they're in the kitchens, and it takes all of us as a team to do what we do, so, always very.
And you can tell they care about kids coming through the line.
They do.
They want them to be happy, so.
They see them every day.
Thank you for all you do.
You're welcome.
Questions coming to you? The meeting shouldn't be.
Yes. Yeah. Thank you.
So I'll just echo, uh, I think Mr. Schreiner summons, I mean, when you look at transportation, you look at food service, there's you, not enough thank-yous. Um, and, and it is wonderful to see the sense of purpose out of both departments and the quality of individuals that work hard every day to serve them, and they don't get near the name thank-you, so they deserve it. So we appreciate all those folks, even though we probably don't say enough, so, thank you to both of you and your departments, and, and the folks who work in the departments. We couldn't make it happen for girls and girls without, you know.
Yeah, so if your kids can't learn, and can't learn, they don't get to school, and these two departments are the backbone of our, of our, uh, system here, so we appreciate it, bro.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Moving on in our agenda, next up, uh, is facility and development with Mr. Bearden.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, on the, uh, agenda for improvement and development, we don't have one on tonight, unless, but Amy is going over with the freezing and cooler, uh, regulation authorizing the approval and award of the execution of a contract with the Bee Martin Construction LLC for the replacement of the walk-in freezer cooler, to have in the media at school. Um, like Lisa was saying, this is the last of the five, uh, bids, bids went out on the twelfth for this, um, item, uh, two bids came back. Um, Martin Construction came in the lower bid at a hundred and four thousand four hundred dollars with additional contingency instead, aside for, uh, fifteen thousand dollars for unforeseen items, and, um, owners requested changes during construction. Uh, these funds will come out of the food service fund, um, after reviewing this item, I move it for passage, Mr. Bearden.
Yes, sir.
Second, Schreiner.
Call him.
Bosso.
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Next on our agenda is our school community and standards report by Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, President Caldwell, we have two items tonight. The first is Central Crossing High School Navy, uh, J R O T P group, team going to Indianapolis on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of February, they'll be missing one day of school. The second item is for the Westland Air Force J R O T P to go to Pennsylvania, Maryland, and Washington DC, they'll be gone from June fifth to the ninth. Having these items on moving to passage.
Give me a second. You want a second then? Will call please. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Up next we have personnel, Mr. Schreiner.
Thank you, President Caldwell, on the board agenda this evening are seven personnel items involving one hundred and eight persons. This includes two certificated resignations, extended service employment dates for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, extended service employment dates for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, seven certificated changes in employment status, sixty-nine certificated employments, extended service employment dates for support personnel for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year, extended service employment dates for support personnel for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year, seven classified resignations, four classified changes in employment status, and eighteen classified employments. After reviewing these action items, I move them for passage at this time.
Give me a second.
I'll second.
You have a second, you have a vocal please?
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes. We have any items for discussion from the board? Yes. We have any items for discussion from the board team? All right, seeing none, uh, we'll accept the motion for adjournment.
I'm with you, Jim.
We have a second? You second that? Well, call please? Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Bosso?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell? Yes. Everyone have a good night. Drive safe. We'll see you on February thirteenth for our next regular meeting.